October 20th, welcome to City Hall. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Hussey, and then please join in Pledge of Leeches.
As we gather here this evening, let us be mindful of our opportunity to serve our fellow citizens and to serve our community. Let us keep in mind the enduring values of our community, putting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which we can build with confidence. We are thankful for this day, its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we be challenged to give our best always to our citizens and our community, and let us continue to strive to make Jefferson City an even better community for all. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Leeches is that our United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome. At this point in time, we'll have roll call, please.
Branch.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
Ward.
We do have a quorum at this point in time. We'll call for adoption of the agenda. I understand that Councilman Bray has an addition of Diane Gillespie underneath the invited guest on number seven.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Would like to amend the motion to add Diane Gillespie as the Deputy President of the Bureau.
Bureau, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there agreement to that? It only takes actually three people to agree to that, so that will be part of our official agenda. Any other changes or whatnot to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How the post same sign motion passes. Next, we'll move into Resolution 2014-22, and our City Administrator Steve Kroll. Steve, welcome.
This is an opportunity to recognize some of our employees. The first one is Lauren Pringer, who is an environmental health specialist for the Planning and Protective Services Division. Lauren's a 32-year employee of the city. Lauren has acted as the mentor throughout his years of dedicated service to the city. He has used his technical knowledge to help new team members and help train employees, as well as other departments across the state. He brings much-needed humor to the work environment to help alleviate stress, and he always has a brighter outlook on situations that may be viewed as troublesome to others. Lauren even, or Lauren never hesitates to answer questions asked by his clients, the general public, or fellow coworkers. He takes time to explain city codes and ordinances, and acts as an encyclopedia on some of the most complex areas in the field, which only a seasoned professional employee would know. Many business owners praise him for his depth of knowledge, and often ask him for advice on how best to approach sanitation practices in their establishment. So, big round of applause for Lauren, and his family's here as well.
Okay, he got the, uh, mayor. And I think you have the, uh... Yes, I do. Want to come up here, guy? We'll give you this. That's a long time, and a heck of a resume. Congratulations. Were you surprised?
Yes, it was.
Thanks for what you do, we appreciate it. How about a round for all? Steve, and do you want to tell the people watching at home, our next person that wasn't able to make it tonight?
As soon as I pull it up, I will.
And Vince Schuster was not able to be here. He is a utility crew supervisor for the wastewater collection division, and has been employed by the city for 38 years. Vince graciously accepts reassignments, even when they are not to his personal benefit, but for the benefit of the city. He works late when necessary, and helps with emergency repairs, off-hours. When a snowstorm hits, he responds to the challenge and other employees, and gets his assignment in a timely manner, and doesn't stop until the job is complete. His experience and knowledge of equipment and construction, and generous sharing of information make him an asset to all city departments. When he has to discipline employees, he does so in a perfect manner, and he is also an advocate for his workers, and he likes to see them succeed. He takes safety very seriously, and always insists on proper use of safety gear and techniques when working in the field. Again, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but I think a round of applause is certainly appropriate. And we'll make sure he gets the resolution there, so...
Thank you, Steve. Next, under C, we have Lieutenant David Williams. Here to tell us more about the Partner City, Minchburg, Germany trip.
Mayor, did we approve that? Do we actually approve the resolution?
Motion to approve Resolution 2014-23. Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And at this point in time, we're undertaking a motion to take up Resolution 2014-22.
No, no, no. No, 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 really?
Has there, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those are officially in the record book, so to speak. And David, I see that you brought someone with you that's from our past. Former Mayor John Landwehr and his wife, our former first lady.
He's gonna actually announce quite a few of the people here.
So, John, long time no see.
Good to see you.
Tell us, tell us all about our sister city.
Well, we would like to say thanks for having us here. There are several people that went on the trip as well. The mayor will get to those in a couple minutes, but what we'll tell you is that we were treated excellent again by our sister Partner City. It's been proven that they really know how to take care of us when we visit, and when they come to see us, we try very hard to reciprocate that. So, one of the things that they did present to us this year was, they are celebrating their 650th, six-five-zero, as a city or a town. And so, what they did was, they gave us a banner to actually bring back, and find some place to put, let's go that way. And they hoped that we would actually be able to, all right, come on, Steve. We'll walk up toward it. Just probably that's the best way.
Oh, okay, turn around.
Let's council see if they know. And what they've done is, they've asked us to put this someplace to display their happiness and willingness to stay Partner City.
Cool, thank you very much, David, it's very nice. We'll make sure we try to get it out here in the main hallway.
As David indicated, and we do appreciate taking a few minutes, it's, you have a lot of left-brain stuff going on tonight, budget, but take a few minutes, just a couple of minutes, and do some right-brain enjoyment of your Partner City relationship. Not only was the, the city was celebrating their 650th anniversary, but we were celebrating the 10th anniversary of our Partner City relationship. And in front of you, you have a token, and they are in the little green bags. They, these are presents that we gave to their city council. Now, they have about 24 people on their city council, I cannot imagine how that would work, but these are wine stoppers commemorating...
Nor could I.
These are wine stoppers commemorating their, the event, the 10-year anniversary. So, we wanted to make sure that you all had those. And they're thinking about maybe coming back. They, we've been over three times, and they've been here twice, and so maybe in 2016, they may come back, and we want to show them the same hospitality that we've shown them before, and they've shown us. And we do have some of the folks who went with us, we just, it was just several weeks ago that we went, and so we had a couple of folks, some are unavailable, of course, but maybe you could just wave the folks who voiced with us? It was a great group, 25. And so, we'll go through a few slides here, and I will tell you that David, Lieutenant Williams, has not seen these slides, so he does not know what I'm going to show everybody.
Yes.
Okay, so...
So, Mayor will control, as the past mayor, he held on to the pictures until tonight, so I'm watching with you.
So, control the mouse, and you can, you can see right, that's our group. Now, when we, the press always gives us good ink, and the, the event is well-covered by the press, several nice articles in their newspaper. And when we arrived at City Hall, they call it the Rath House, when we arrived, we were greeted with a band, and they played the, the United States Stars and Stripes? And their, and their Germ...
Star Spangled Banner.
Star Spangled Banner, thank you, thank you. And they, and then, and then the Germ, the, the, the German song, very nice. They, let's see, oops, I gotta go back here, sorry. They had very nice amenities and beverages, and they greeted us outside of City Hall. The tall guy in the middle there is their new mayor, Mayor Zuber, Christian Zuber, very cordial, and we were ushered inside, that's their City Hall. Lots of residents attended, they had a choir. One of their traditions is to sign the book. They have a book, goes back to heck, 650 years, but they have a book where you, if you're, it's a golden book, and where you sign, if you're a guest, and they take it very seriously. And so, all of our, all of our group were allowed to sign, sign the golden book. Now, they, Mayor Zuber presented a, an original painting that's on its way here. I checked with Laura this morning, it's not here yet. But there will be an original painting commemorating their 650th, and it's on the way, and so, Mayor will find a nice place to put that, I'm sure. They have, as we do, in their City Hall, you know, out here, we have a case with a lot of different things, USS Jefferson City and our Partner City things. They have an entire case that's dedicated to the Partner City relationship, with pictures. My mom, '99, she sewed those flags for Mayor Zuber and Mayor Fine. Mayor Fine is on the right, and he has, he's been our friend there for, he served for 12 years, I think. Mayor Zuber is the new mayor, both were very cordial. Of course, after the ceremonies, we enjoyed food and beverages, and the, there weren't a lot of vegetables during that week. They liked, they liked their pork, and they liked their dumplings, very proud of them. We all gained about 10 pounds. We stayed at the, at a very nice place, right downtown, it's the family, it's owned by the family, the Rosner family. It's right downtown, you step out, you can walk to City Hall, it's within a block, you can go get a cup of coffee or, or food. It's right downtown in Minchburg. And Mayor Fine was our host throughout the time that we were there. Beautiful little town, that's just a shot from the square. Now, some of these are, some of these photographs, I want to plant the seed here, some, some, some potential ideas. You know, they have a little river flowing through their town, and they take very good care of it, and they've landscaped it. You know, and I'm, I'm serious, the first time I saw this little river, I'm thinking, where's creek? We could do a better job with this little creek that goes through our town. Everywhere you see, everywhere we traveled, there were beautiful landscapes, more food, of course. Now, again, again, a political statement, you know, the county has trouble with their clock in their courthouse. This is the Glockenspiel in Munich, and you know, where the characters come in and out, and they rotate, and you know, they're very old, so this could be the solution to the county commission's problem with their clock in the courthouse. Also, you know, we kept seeing things that reminded us of home. This is a, this is a large amphitheater that was actually built, built by Hitler, and it was never completed. It's in Nuremberg, and it was never completed, and what does that look like? It kind of looks like MSP, doesn't it, some parts of it? And so, they're, they're struggling, Nuremberg is a, is a large town, Nuremberg is struggling with what to do with historic, with this historical amenity. So, you're not alone with what to do with MSP. More food, always. Now, we did other things than just going to the Partner City. We flew into Munich, and we enjoyed a day seeing the castles, in a little bit southwest of Munich, and we went to Salzburg, Salzburg by train. Beautiful city, of course, it's about a two-hour train trip. The Mirabell Gardens, am I pronouncing that right, Dave?
So far.
Mirabell Gardens, and of course, it's where The Sound of Music was filmed. And there's, there's one of our guests who's not here tonight, but Dr. Bob Woncombe was at the gate to the Mirabell Gardens there in Salzburg, in addition to our Partner City, Partner City trip. You were kind enough to create city sign, a city sign that, and they have in Hoff, which is about 20 miles away from our Partner City, they have something called the Signpost Village. And it's a gentleman who, a number of years ago, decided to create a village where there's nothing but signs from throughout the world, and it's kind, become kind of a tourist attraction. And so, we were asked to contribute a sign, and we, and you did. And so, we have, the Cole County contributed a sign, City of Jefferson committed a sign, and I thought Dunkland Street, since it's really where old Munichburg is, it's our connection, really, with Minchburg, with our Partner City, I thought it was an opportunity to also donate a sign from Dunkland Street. And thanks to Matt and the Public Works Department, and those guys for helping out with those signs. I don't want to know what it costs to send them over there, it's buried somewhere in tonight's budget, probably, right?
Now I know why you have me up here.
As Dave indicated, it was their 650th anniversary, and so when we were there, they were celebrating their, that, that great event. And we were always a part of the event, that's their area downtown. We were, we were gathered, we were, we, they, they brought us up, they introduced us. It was a little rainy, but they had big tents, and there were appropriate beverages at all times. Mayor Fine on the right, and our other guests. Fireworks, very nice fireworks display. And then, to conclude the event, we did, we did slip into the, what they call the real Oktoberfest in Munich. And that was very, that was very interesting. Now, I will tell you, we felt safe at all times. Because David Williams would, would make contact with the local police, and they were very helpful at all times. We always felt safe, and he was willing to take this picture with this big black guy in this little sign that says JCMO. He was very...
He tried to pronounce it, but...
He was very nice. In the, the Oktoberfest is really quite unbelievable, but always, there were 8,000 people in a tent, and there were eight tents. So, it's a big deal. Again, we always felt safe. The, the security people were, where's the chief? Chief, if you ever have any trouble, make your security people look like that guy. Because he's pretty intimidating, but he was nice enough to, to, to welcome us. And you know, oops, oh, I'm, what did I do? Oh, Bill, you know, oops. We always, we always felt sa, this isn't, this is, this isn't... Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Is that a get out of jail free?
I'm losing, I'm losing my, oh, okay, let's go back, okay, okay. So, we always felt safe, and this is one of their undercover policemen. Right? Very nice. And then, you know, in the spirit of outreach, we're always looking for people who may want to come back in 2016, and so these people, at least they told me that they'd be willing to come back in 2016. So, we would like to invite them back. I don't know their names, though. I want to shout out to Edie Vogel, Farmer City Councilman, who's been on every trip. Edie came along, had a great time. And I want to thank David and Stephanie Williams. Stephanie's not here, but...
She is.
Excuse me, Stephanie, sorry. David and Stephanie have been absolute troopers, both when the Germans come here, and we go there. Troopers, oh, sorry, police. It just doesn't sound right to say they've been absolute police, but whatever you say. Now, you did, Mayor, you were kind enough to give, to, to make available five city coins for the, for the trip, and we really appreciate that. And I presented them to Farmer Mayor Fine, current Mayor Zuber. I felt that the family, Rosner, that, that were so accommodating at the hotel, would very much deserve a city coin, and also to the, they call it the deputy mayor. I have one city coin left, and I, with your, I didn't, I'm catching you off-guard on this, but I'd like, with your permission, I still have the city coin, and I have somebody that I would nominate to have you presented to, because this person has been instrumental in every trip going over, and every time we've had to welcome the Germans. And it's Colleen Taylor at Midwest Travel. So, may I present this on your behalf?
Cool, thank you, David.
Colleen is the epitome of above and beyond, and I can think of nobody who would be more fitting to have the fifth coin that you made available for the trip. So, with your permission, I'll present.
By all means.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, you want to say anything?
I just want to say, thank you for everyone, and they're so excited about coming back to visit Jefferson City.
So, we'll see you in 2016. Thanks for your time tonight, I know you're busy, we wanted to share this fund with you.
All right, how about a round of applause for Mayor Landwehr and the group that continues our great tradition with our sister city. And for the group, I wanted you to know this, I talked to Samuel at Samuel's Tuxedo, and the John Landwehr bobblehead dial, doll, will more than likely be out by Christmas, so keep that, keep that in mind. All right, moving on, thanks again, guys. We have a presentation of a CAFRA award, and our new finance IT director, Mr. Bill Betts. Bill, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to read a little bit about what the, this award is. And the Government Financial Officers Association of the United States and Canada, also known as the GFOA, awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Jefferson for its comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFRA, for the fiscal year ended October 31st, 2013. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The certificate of achievement is a prestigious national award recognizing conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local government financial reporting. In order to be awarded the certificate, the city must publish an easily readable and efficiently organized CAFRA whose contents conform to program standards. The CAFRA must satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles, known as the GAAP, and applicable legal requirements. The CAFRA is also judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure. The CAFRA was produced through the dedicated efforts of the Finance Department with assistance from Everson Company CPAs LLC, the city's independent auditors. This is the 18th consecutive year that the city has received this award dating back to 1996. I'd like to recognize Sheila Perry and Karasanki, they're the city's accountants, they do a good portion of the work that happens for us in order for us to get this award. Along with that, I think we, as the Finance Department, would like to thank the mayor, the city council, the city administrator, other department heads, and fellow city employees for their support in helping the Finance Department to strengthen and improve the financial operations of the city. I mean, we regularly are coming to the council asking for new things, and new ways of doing things. Even tonight, we're going to talk about some of the financial policies that we want to put in place, and the council, and, and the mayor, and, and folks have been receptive to that, so we really appreciate that. Here's what the award looks like, it looks like a diploma, but it says GFOA on the front, and it says Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So, we're very proud to have gotten this award again for the 18th consecutive year.
Bill, thank you very much, appreciate it. And ladies, congratulations, and Bill, congratulations to all your staff. All right, next we have a public hearing dealing with rezoning. We'll have third reading of Bill 2014-72, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 2.62 acres from RU Rural to RS1 Single Family Residential for land addressed as 3136 Algoa Road, described as part of private survey number 2680 Township 44 North, Range 11 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Janice, is this actually 73 and 74?
Yes, the rezoning is 73, and there's an associated bill for the subdivision that's 74.
So, there's not a 72? I just have an error here on my agenda, so, well, she just said it was for 73, correct? All right, Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application came before the September meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As the clerk mentioned, this property is located on Algoa Road, it's about 400 feet north of Travis Court. The applicant actually owns about 80 acres of agricultural land in this vicinity. This request is to rezone about a two-and-a-half acre parcel, so that the land may be used for single-family residential development. Standard notice procedures were followed in advance of tonight's public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Janice on 2014-73? Seeing none, at this point in time, we'll open up the hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor of number 73? Anyone to speak against? That will close the public hearing. Any questions for staff on 73? Council debate, roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you want to do 74 now, too, Janice? Or do you want to wait till later? Okay. If it's okay with you, we'll just wait till later, since we don't have it right here on this agenda. Okay, moving on, no appointments by myself this evening, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. First, we have Mr. Bill Lockwood with our Parks and Rec Department. Bill, welcome, good to see you again. Bill's here to give us an update on a multipurpose building status with Lincoln University.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we last met here, we've had a couple of good meetings between Parks and Recreation staff, and Lincoln staff, and our architect. I think we're making some good progress architecturally in trying to combine the two proposed facilities, getting away from a duplex comp concept, instead of building two side-by-side, we're really trying to work hard to make this a partnership where as much as possible is merged within the building, so that it's as seamless as possible when someone enters the facility, either public or students. So, that's moving along. Our next, and maybe a little bit more challenging, aspect is getting into the elements of a memorandum of understanding. We're setting on the process of identifying the financial resources that each of the parties brings to the table, not only capital improvement-wise, but more specifically, and probably more important in the long term, is the operating expenses and revenue, and what each of the parties are going to be able to contribute to that, how we're going to assign the various costs and responsibilities within the building, determining kind of a management structure and staffing, and those sorts of things, which are really key to making it, it work. But I want to thank Dr. Rome and the staff of Lincoln University. I think we've formed a very cordial and very cooperative relationship so far, and we've gotten to know each other much better than we, before we started this process, and, and right now, I think everything is moving ahead nicely, and we've kind of set a timetable for the end of the year in order to have our operating agreements pretty well shaped up and, and ready to go, and be able to make a final decision by then as whether this is a partnership that we think is going to work over the long haul, or whether it's not. But right now, we're optimistic about it, there's certainly no roadblocks in the way right now of progress, and we're going to just keep working away as, as quickly as we can with our consultant, our staff, to, to get this all put together, to be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Bill? All right, Bill, thank you very much for being here. I understand Dr. Rome couldn't make it, he said he was out of town. Next, we have announcements from Council, wait a second, I forgot, Diane Gillespie as an invited guest. Diane, welcome back. Understand you're here to talk to us about Marodra.
About what?
Isn't it Marodra?
Oh, Marodra, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for the invite, and yes, I am here to talk about that, I was unsure.
That's what I have written down here in the, in the pre-meeting, unless I change the scorecard on it.
Tell us about, tell us about a slice of pie.
Tell you about a slice of pie. Well, let me mention to you, I laid a pack...
Well, let me mention to you, I laid a packet of information in front of you for this evening to give you kind of an idea of how we go about trying to bring motor coach business into Jefferson City. And I will say, though, now that we have the Missouri State Penitentiary and the 15-year lease agreement, it has opened up this new market for us a little bit more secure. Before, we weren't able to guarantee that we were going to be able to offer those tours for the next year when the motor coach planners were booking the tours. So, now we're able to move forward. But in addition to having MSP in the Capitol and all the other historical sites, we want to look at what unique sites that we have in the community that we can offer to these folks to get them to stay in town maybe one, two, or three nights. That's our mission, to increase the lodging tax. So, we came up with one that's called "A Slice of Pie." And almost the most unique or quirkiest titles that you can get will draw attention to them. And you will see from the tours that we put together, we have some kind of quirky titles. But "The Slice of Pie" starts out down in the Carnahan Memorial Gardens in the whole Jefferson Landing area. Then we take them to one of our local restaurants, and then we head over to Village Square area, and they get to tour some of the arts and crafts over there and visit the Capital City Freedom Corner. And then we take them on a tour of the Jefferson City Moro Heights Historic District, Moro Drive Historic District. And we have used Ann Hall as our local step-on guide. And what these folks are looking for when they're on their motor coach, they don't want a canned speech. They want somebody that is local, that will step on the bus and tell the story about Jefferson City and about the area. And that's what makes it unique. It was the first time that we used Ann a couple weeks ago. She was very, very nervous about it, and we were like, "Just get on there and talk to the folks." And when she stepped off, she had a ball doing it, and the folks love that type of thing. So, and then we take them to the downtown diner downtown, and we serve them a slice of pie. And that's how we came up with the title. So, our message to you all is if you have anything that's unique out there that you think would be attractive to our motor coach groups, please give us a call and let us see how we can incorporate that into one of our tours for the motor coach groups that come in. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Gillespie? All right, Diane, or Ralph, go ahead.
This is one of several tours, but this is your newest tour that you're offering?
This is the newest one that we came up with. We put this together this summer. We had an intern that worked with this this summer, and that was one of her projects, was to help us put together some new tours, and it was one that she worked with Mary Ann in our office to put it together.
Diane, would you agree that having the National Register, the status for this historic district is significant in offering it to the tours and the motor coaches?
Sure, that adds to the whole experience that they have in coming in and seeing what that area is about. So, yes, it did.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments for Diane? All right, Diane, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you for the time.
Appreciate it very much. Next, we have any announcements by council members or staff? Mr. Costalis?
Yes, I'd just like to announce that this coming Saturday at 10 o'clock at Chick-fil-A, Councilman Graham and I will be hosting our monthly coffee. It's open to anybody to come by and talk about any city issue they wish to speak to us about.
Okay. Anything to add, Mr. Graham?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else on number eight? All right, seeing none, nothing under nine consent agenda at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we'll go into bills introduced, well, first reading of Bill 2014-80.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12 Elections of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by deleting references to primary election in order to be consistent with the city charter.
Mr. Hilford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really just some cleanup work in Chapter 12 to make sure... It used to reference some primary election. It made primary election references, and since we changed the charter, this is just cleanup work to delete those references.
Any questions on number 80? First reading of 81, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21 Nuisances of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the date tax bills are submitted to the county collector.
Mr. Hilford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request from our city clerk. The code currently tells her that the tax bills have to be submitted on June of each year. The county collector actually requests them at different times, specifically September usually. So, this just gives Phil's the authority to submit those tax bills at the time requested by the county collector.
Any questions on 81? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 2014-82, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 29 Sewer and Sewer Disposal of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the assessment of late fees for sewer bills.
Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is today, our sewer bill, late fees charges is a little confusing. At one time, we charged 10% for a late fee, and then we start charging 1.5%. Staff felt that it would be better, not only for staff and how to calculate the fees, but for also for our customers, of which we have roughly 20,000 of, to help them understand what the late fee structure is for the city. So, what we want to do is add a 5% one-time-a-month late fee, as opposed to a 10%, and then 10 days later, a 1.5%, and then 30 days later, another 1.5%. So, staff has requested this. This has been through committee, and committee approved to send on to the council. We would also ask that this... The rules be suspended because it is pre-printed on the back of our card stock. We will be running out of card stock in December, so we need to get new card stock ordered.
Okay. Are there two members that would mind if the rules were suspended? If there's not two or more, the rules would be officially suspended, seeing none. Rules would be suspended, and we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 29 Sewers and Sewer Disposal of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the assessment of late fees for sewer bills.
Discussion, Bob.
Bill, so just so I understand, you're saying that there will be one 5% delinquent fee? Is that assessed each month?
Yes, sir. It'll be assessed the 20th of each month. Bills are due on the 15th of each month, so we have a grace period in there, five days, and if we still haven't received it, we'll assess it on the 20th of each month. Make sure I'm right about that.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on 82? Or debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this point in time, we'll have first reading of 2014-83.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2013-2014 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds from the general fund.
Mr. Betts.
Actually, this one's mine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Drew, go ahead.
No problem. This is a continuation of some discussions we had in closed session where the council is willing to sell 620 West McCarty. However, as a result of our getting a grant some years ago in order to sell the property, we have to pay off that grant loan amount, and that is $136,138. So, this ordinance will authorize the transfer from the reserve fund into a transits fund to pay that off. And then this will be followed up with a contract for sale when we're all paid off. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or debate on 83? When they'll debate, I guess, we're just questions at this point in time? Okay, moving on, we have first reading of 2014-84, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a portion of Frog Hollow Road right-of-way.
Matt?
Thank you. With the completion of our nearing completion of our Creek Trail project, the excess right-of-way from the previous Frog Hollow Road is vacant now, and the school district was good enough to donate new right-of-way for our new Creek Trail alignment. And so, they own property on both sides of the old roadway. This bill would vacate the old right-of-way to the school district.
Any questions for Matt on 84? Thank you, Matt. Moving on, we have first reading of 2014-85.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2014-2015 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds from the parking reserve fund.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this will be a supplemental appropriation from the parking fund. It's for $995,537. It'll be utilized to purchase the Housing Authority lot at the corner of Broadway and McCarty. Some people may not realize, but the Housing Authority owns a good portion of that lot, and we do basically a revenue-sharing agreement with them where basically we do all the work and they get some of the revenue from it. So, we've worked out a deal where we can purchase that lot, and that those funds would come from our fund balance of the parking fund, not the general fund. And right now, our fund balance in the parking area is approximately $4 million. So, this would reduce it down to about $3 million. And just to get a sense of what that does, our annual operating budgets between $800,000 and $900,000 in the parking fund. So, we'd still have a very hefty 300 or so percent fund balance for that group. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Matt on 85? All right, moving on, we have first reading of 2014-86.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2014-2015 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds from the general fund.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the budget hearings, the committee recommended that a couple of items, the first one here being GPS equipment, be purchased out of... by supplemental appropriation out of the fund balance from the general fund. The estimated cost is to be $18,900. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Graham?
Would that come out of this year's budget? I know there was a concern that it may not be enough time for it to come out.
Right. The way that it would work is that we would... We'll just do a... Since it's coming from the fund balance, once the supplemental appropriation is done, it'd actually be part of the 2015 budget, it'd be part of it as a supplemental appropriation instead of being part of the 2015 budget document that we're creating. It's just a supplemental.
Okay. Thank you. So, it'd basically be affecting the budget that could be approved tonight?
In a way, yes, sir. That's...
Right. It'd be reducing that balance.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions on 86? Okay, first reading of 2014-87, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2014-2015 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds from the general fund.
Mr. Betts?
Yep, this is the other item that the Budget Committee had recommended. Initially, it was recommended as part of the mayor's budget to come from the sales taxee funds to purchase four police vehicles. The committee recommended, instead, we take it from the fund balance from the general fund. So, this would be the supplemental appropriation that would allow us to do that. The vehicles are typically ordered in the spring, so that's when the money would be utilized.
Any questions on 87? All right, we'll go into... Thank you, Bill. We'll move into bills introduced, or bills pending, with a third reading of Bill 2014-67.
An ordinance amending Chapter 26A Purchasing and Finance of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the purchasing authority of the city administrator.
Mr. Hilford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance would allow the city administrator to purchase $25,000 per year on a contract. So, if renewals were also $25,000, or less than $25,000, he could sign a year contract with renewals, so long as it's less than that amount. Discuss this quite a bit. I'm happy to answer any more questions instead of explaining to you again, because I'm sure you have some. The other minor part of this is just that it clarifies the consent agenda, just to say how we present you with a memorandum and a brief explanation and a contract. I'm sorry, I should have been a little more clear. Then there's that second level, between 25 and 50, where the city administrator has to come to you for approval for those type of contracts, and that's done by a memorandum and a copy of the contract. And then if just two of you want to pull it off the consent agenda and treat it regularly, it is done that way. Happy to answer any questions. I can go into further explanation, but I know I've done it a couple times, so I don't want to bore you either.
Any questions of Drew on 67? Any council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-69.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 3.5 of the Flexible Benefit Plan for city employees as originally adopted by Ordinance 12-181, as most recently amended by Ordinance 15-178.
Gail?
Thank you. This is our annual update to our cafeteria plan. This comes around each year as we negotiate our insurance benefit plans with various companies. Our goal this year was to offer our employees a selection of plans that would best meet their employees' needs and to come within the amounts that were budgeted in the mayor's proposed budget. Working with Wall Street Insurance, we negotiated four plans with United Healthcare. United Healthcare has been our carrier for a number of years now, and we are recommending the amounts listed in the ordinance as the city's share and the employee's share, with no change in the employee's share and under a 10% increase in the city's share. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments, or any questions versus staff on 69? Seeing none? Any comments or any debate by council on 69? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
This wasn't an amendment. This was the ordinance that was submitted?
As amended here, that was presented.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It's just an ordinance, and what it does is amend the city code. I mean, the personal policy manual. Personal policy manual, city code.
No, it's actually the city code.
Oh, okay. But what you have in front of you isn't a substitute. It's just saying, or an amendment. It's just saying the text within that ordinance is amending the city code.
Okay, Rick. All right, sorry about that. Moving on, we'll have third reading of 2014-70.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the interchange of Highway 5063 and Lafayette Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is an agreement with MoDOT. It's concerning the construction of the new Lafayette Street interchange. They received bids on that, and just have awarded the project. Basically, the agreement is just a notice to the local jurisdiction of the project taking
of certain aspects of the project, and also allows them to go ahead and close Elm Street, which is a city street, and limit access onto Miller Street. You have to answer any questions?
Any questions of Matt on number 70? Any council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-74.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Stroke Farm Ridge subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the companion bill to the rezoning bill, Bill 73. Again, this property is located on Algoa Road, about 400 feet north of Travis Court. This bill would accept the final plat that would create two single-family lots. Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this subdivision at their meeting on September 11th. And you'll see, this is the location of the, of the property. The area to be rezoned is that frontage along Algoa Road. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on 74, staff? Any council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-78, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21, nuisances of the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to appointment of hearing examiner.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would amend Section 9 of Chapter 21 pertaining to the appointment of a hearing examiner. Currently, the Director of Planning Protective Services serves as the hearing examiner, and this change will allow some flexibility in case there is a conflict, either real or perceived, allows the appointment of an alternate hearing officer. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. McMillan on 78? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have third reading of 2014-76.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with American Tower LLC for an extension of the existing cell tower lease between the parties for the cell tower located behind Fire Station 4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a clerk pretty much read what it is, but it's an extension of five, five-year period, so it could be up to 25 years for the location of the cell tower behind Fire Station 4. We'll get a $10,000 down payment as well as an increase from the currently, currently we get $19,800, and it'll go up to $23,100 per year. And every renewal term, almost five-year renewal terms, it'll go up 20%. This was something we discussed somewhat in closed session, had quite a bit of negotiation with them about, and feel that this is probably the, the best deal we can get.
Any questions for Drew at this point in time on 76? Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 77, third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with American Tower LLC for an expansion of the existing cell tower lease between the parties for the cell tower located behind Old Fire Station 3.
Mr. Hilper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. American Tower came to us as well and looked for a footprint expansion behind Fire Station, Old Fire Station 3, which has no value to us except as a, as a cell tower location. They asked for an additional 700 square feet, and after some negotiation, we agreed that they would pay the same rate that they pay for the cell tower itself. So that'll mean an increase of $1,190 per month or $14,280 per year. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Drew on number 77? Any debate by council members? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-75, 78, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21, nuisances of the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to appointment of hearing examiner.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would amend Section 9 of Chapter 21 pertaining to the appointment of a hearing examiner. Currently, the Director of Planning Protective Services serves as the hearing examiner, and this change will allow some flexibility in case there is a conflict, either real or perceived, allows the appointment of an alternate hearing officer. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. McMillan on 78? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-79.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri establishing election dates in the city of Jefferson, Missouri for 2015.
Mr. Hilper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance will set the general election date for next year for Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, of course. All, we'll have five council members, the mayor, the municipal judge, and city prosecutor all up for election. The declaration of candidacy will be between 8:00 AM on Tuesday, December 16th, and 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 20th. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Drew on 2014-79? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have, let's see, we're at the informal calendar. Mr. Bray, we have 2014-65. Your call, sir.
Yes, I would like to remove the budget from the informal calendar.
Okay, the budget, the 2014-2015 budget, and I guess this would be referred to as the mayor's budget, is that right?
Yes, the mayor's budget.
At this point in time, that will be on the table, and we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2014, to October 31, 2015, and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Mr. Betts?
Yes, this is the mayor's proposed budget for 2015, and the budget committee has had several meetings to discuss the budget, and I believe Mr. Bray intends to have a substitute to introduce the budget committee's changes.
Mr. Bray?
Yes, I move, Mr. Mayor, to substitute the mayor's budget with the budget committee's recommended budget.
There's a second. There's a motion to suspend and a second. Was it a substitute?
Substitute.
Or a substitute?
Motion to substitute, yes.
Right, not suspend, okay. Let's take that up, voice vote? And then vote, okay. All of those willing to take up the substitution?
Councilman Prather, looks like you might have a question.
I just want to know which one we're voting on? Is it the, just in front of us?
Yeah, what's in front of you is exactly what the budget committee passed.
So if we want this, we're voting in the positive, if we don't, we're voting the negative, I'm assuming.
Actually, right now, you're voting to bring up the substitute.
Right. If you vote no, it'll mean you prefer the mayor's budget as submitted.
Is this a final vote on this, or just somebody bringing it up?
No, this is just to substitute the mayor's budget with the committee's budget.
Yep.
This is only the substitute, there'll, still has to be a vote to approve the budget itself.
Okay.
If I may, I will remind, after we bring the committees, the budget committee's budget on the floor with this vote, after that, I will then move to amend that budget.
This is just simply bringing forth what the budget committee has done so far?
Yeah, it's kind of the procedural thing, because the mayor's budget was brought to you, and it's the only one on the floor.
Okay. This brings up a new motion to talk about as the night goes on. It's not a finalization, Rick.
We want to get the right one in front of you, that's right.
Right, okay. Any discussion on bringing up your budget? Seeing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that's unanimous. And now we'll be discussing the council's new and improved budget, we'll call it for now. Mr. Bray?
All right, at this time, I would like to amend the budget to place the funding of additional positions into a new line item called Additional Positions, Equipment, Expenses, with a stipulation that council authorization is required prior to expenditure. And I will have, I'll hand that budget, the amended budget, out at this time. There's plenty to go on down around there, and if you would, please, everyone can take one, there's plenty to go on down around.
And if we could get a second procedurally to make sure that's something we need to discuss?
Yeah, can I have a second, please? Thank you, Drew, for keeping us on. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
After, after this gets around and everyone gets a copy of it...
Ralph, do you have your, could you restate your motion, please, for the clerk?
To amend the budget to place the funding for additional positions into a new line item called Additional Positions, Equipment, Expenses, with a stipulation that council authorization is required prior to expenditure.
And that total dollar amount, Ralph, do you have that handy? Or maybe Bill, or...
I do. It's $232,250.77. $232,250.77.
Seven seven, okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to kind of make sure everybody's on the same page, what Councilman Bray has put in front of you would be ultimately what he's, what, how his, the amended budget would look if that were passed.
The amended budget, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
The amended budget that is being passed around and you're getting now is the budget that we would actually intend for a vote tonight to be the, the new budget for the next fiscal year. And also, after we get every, after everyone has it, I would like to ask Mr. Betts if he could speak about it, about the amended, the amended portion.
Sure.
I have a question for Drew, just a, a point of information. It says funding for additional position slash equipment expenses, and it also says here that the council would have to authorize that. Per the city charter, isn't the city administrator within his means to spend money at a certain level regardless of council approval? And what's that dollar amount?
That's actually in code, and it was just, it's twenty-five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, and he's certainly in charge of hiring individuals. But, that, because that's by code, the council can, if they want to reserve this fund, just as they've reserved the reserve fund, I think they can do that.
Okay. Alright, Carlos.
Yes, I do have one more thing here. Yes. This, the purpose for this is to allow time to conduct a full and complete analysis of the city's needs and priorities. We also need further discussion about our five-year plan and what council thinks are the right assumptions for that plan. Our city administrator in turn needs time to complete his analysis of the capital replacement plan and what type of changes can be implemented internally to address some of our needs. In addition, it gives us a chance to see what the budget and revenue will do over the next few months. When council and Steve have done what they need to do, and during, anytime during the upcoming fiscal year, Steve can come back to the council with suggestions about what is best for the city. Therefore, this recommended, this amended budget provides flexibility and time to address our needs as we watch our revenues. This budget is purposely cautious and responsible.
And, and?
If I may?
Go ahead.
Mr. Graham.
Well, Councilman Bray, while I appreciate you putting this for us to give us something else to look at, certainly I appreciate that, and what I think it does is puts the onus back on to our city administrator, who we hired to, to do his job. However, I do have a concern with moving this here forward, so I don't know if this is the time now or not for a friendly amendment, but to leave police and a fire training officer in our original budget instead of taking them and placing them into the item. So, I would like to see it to where that the firefighter, the fire training officer as well as the police officer position remains in there for hire, for move, and does not have to go before the city administrator then back to us. So that would be my only objection to that, so I don't know if you'd be willing for a friendly amendment to the motion or not.
Hold on just a second, Drew, did we do friendlies in this?
Well.
Organization, I know in other organizations in the past we haven't, but.
I think it's just a regular amendment.
Fairgrounds, we were kind of a little, we were a little bit younger then, so we didn't follow the rules.
It, we don't have specifically a friendly amendment, but if Mr. Graham is.
Is that an amendment, Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion, or we have an amendment to Rouse, excuse me, a motion to amend with a first and second to keep the police and fire positions in, is that basically what I'm hearing, Mr. Graham?
Yes, that's it, sir.
Further discussion on the amendment.
You looking at me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
For clarity's sake, Mr. Bray, maybe you can clarify, my understanding was that you were setting aside this fund, this two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars with the intent that any of these positions could be funded, but wanting to seek some clarity and some prioritization to do so. And so, I don't know if you've had further conversations with staff to learn as to whether or not, you know, if, if the police officer position, I feel like that was the one requested, I couldn't see the chief changing course on that. That's what he pushed for, but the training officer, there was multiple requests from, from the fire chief regarding that. And I guess, to me, Mr. Graham, this may tie the hands a little bit to be flexible within the fire department to maybe meet some of those multiple requests. You know, maybe there's a way to do the training piece differently and fund a shift staff member that was discussed at the council level. And so I guess I'm not, I think it, I think the general feeling from the original amendment here proposed by Mr. Bray, a vote in favor to modify the budget that way is not a vote in opposition to funding any positions. I think it's a vote to give our city administrator some flexibility to do some things. However, I fear that this amendment, a vote in favor obviously is in support of two positions, but the perception could then be that a vote in opposition is in opposition to funding police and fire, which I don't think that's the intent of actually the original amendment by Mr. Bray. And I apologize if that feels like I'm speaking in circles, but I think it starts to limit that pool back down again to where we get to the point that we're back to the budget committee's budget, and all we've done is modify a couple things. And I don't know if that starts to take away from the intent of Mr. Bray, so I'm not certain totally how I, how I feel about it just yet. I think that the intent is to give some broader flexibility to prioritize, and if that's the route we choose to go, I think we should accept Mr. Bray's amendment. If we don't want to do that, then let's just pass the budget as is that came out of budget committee.
Anyone else down first base here, so to speak? Mr. Brayther.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. Councilman Graham had mentioned, put the onus back on the city administrator, which is exactly what we're doing, and the budget does have positions in there, and he so feels that those need, are the priority, he'll bring those to us. So I don't see that why we need to specify a position when it is, like you said, the onus is on him. And let the city administrator decide at what time, you know, we got to take into the timing, prioritizing, funds availability, the fund balance, how the revenues are coming in, and any unforeseen expenses. We need to look at all those things, and I'm sure the administrator is going to be paying attention to that and bringing these to us as he sees fit. And that's what I think, if I am incorrect, Councilman Bray can say so, thanks.
Mr. Mahalovich.
I think I first put the fire and the, and the police position up, and then it sort of got to be, well, no one position is more important to our city, we operate as a team, and therefore we added a couple of other positions. And I felt like we were kind of get into a, kind of a equalization amongst our staff, and I felt like that was, that was fine, while I looked at the budget, then we asked Mr. Betts to provide us a projection. And in his projection, it didn't look rosy. And so that became the game changer to me, to suggest that maybe we should pull back and have the city administrator prioritize. Because it's asked to me during debate whether or not the city administrator and the mayor were making a statement with regard to the needs through their budget, and had they had time to make those necessary changes. So, I'm in support of the original motion from the standpoint that we are going to allow our city administrator to, to come forward when, when the revenues are such that we can, we can feel comfortable about them. I want to remind everybody that this budget still has a two percent increase in pay, correct?
Correct.
A transit to go to St. Mary's, correct?
Correct.
We have a police captain, correct?
Correct.
And we have police vehicles. I'm sorry that we can't necessarily fund some of the other pink sheets, and here, here are the pink sheets. And that's the other thing I think I had problems with, is we didn't have any pink sheet parity. We just kind of had a first in the, in the, in the slot, and then there were a lot of things in here I would have liked to discuss a little further. So I think, given the benefit of time and a better rosier revenue picture, I would appreciate some pink sheet parity as well as an approval of, of some staffing that we need as recommended by our city administrator. That's all.
Bob.
I, I too feel like that, that, you know, given, given the financial policy that we just passed a little bit ago, if my math is right, we're, we're more than a few hundred thousand dollars down from that seventeen percent number, and so I, I think that giving the city administrator the flexibility, we're, we're not saying that we're not putting the money into the budget, we're just saying that we would like for him to evaluate and, and use his judgment, working with staff, to create priorities and, and, I mean, he's, he's been here maybe six months. I'm not sure exactly how long the time's been, but somewhere in that neighborhood. And I think he is still learning and, and, and coming to know the city and know the staffing and know the, know the requirements. And, and so I, I think this is very, it's conservative move, which I think's a good thing. It gives the administrator and staff the opportunity to work together and, and figure out where the need really is. And at that point, when that's established, they can, can make the, you know, the request, and certainly if the, if the money's there and the, and the year progresses as we anticipate it's going to, there shouldn't be a problem at all proving those requests.
Mr. Carlos, I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I prefer going with the budget committee, the budget that was proposed by the committee, not the amendment. Fund the positions, doesn't mean he has to spend the money right now. And he doesn't have to come back to us to seek approval to fund one or the other. Money's there, he doesn't have, the administrator doesn't have to spend it right now. I mean, we put money in there for vehicles, copies and stuff like that, they're not running out and spending all the money. They, they do a good job of watching it all year long. So I would prefer sticking with the original budget that was proposed by the committee.
I have something to, to add, because I kind of feel a little bit guilty as to why we're here tonight. And I said this during the budget committee meetings over the last several weeks. When the CIP or SIP, when the SIP program was originally introduced, it was there to obviously save us in a, in a, in a very bad year where revenues weren't there, there's some not miscalculations, but things just didn't come in as we saw fit. So, as we, as different departments lost positions and employees, I think when we say positions, I think we have to use the word employees, because that's truly what they are. It was never intended for those employees to stay out of those departments forever. Matter of fact, it was my understanding after I turned in the budget to the, to the council that our public safety positions were ones that were supposed to come back as times got better. And whether it's public safety dollars or employees, employees versus positions is what I like to call these. Public safeties, I mean, we all, I know are for public safety, you can't be in a, in a, in a city this size or have public office without promoting public safety. But as a former firefighter, I know firsthand what it is to be on a fire scene less two people or less one person. I do ride occasionally with, with our police force, normally Thanksgiving night or the night before Thanksgiving, because it's busy and it gets me out of the house. But whether it's a fireman, a training officer, a fireman that could be at a wreck, whether they're working or not, whether they can help someone with a heart attack, whether they're working or not, a training officer that could help all their officers. Or to some of you that might be newer to all this, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a gunman come into one of our local hotels when one of our largest employees in the city was having a Christmas party. And an off-duty officer, and Mark, I can't remember if he was one of ours or county or both. Okay. Was there. And it's hard telling what could have happened that night if that employee wasn't there to give us the best public safety that we could. I think you're going to see some savings out of these positions, because it's going to take time to get them filled. But I think as a public city, or as a public, as a capital city, we can only look to our north and wish that they had more officers on duty. And with that, I would be very much in favor of the amendment offered by Mr. Graham. Larry.
I initially kind of went, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I initially kind of went back and forth with this, with both, with Councilman Bray's amendment and then also the original, excuse me, the original budget that we, that he brought off the informal calendar. But as I think about it, and Mr. Mayor, you, you mentioned this pretty good, you know, public safety is, is probably, it's, it's at the tip-top for me. And, and so if, if, if we have the funds available there to be able to, to fund those positions, and as I also remember with the SIP program, those, those positions weren't to go away permanently. As I recall those discussions that we had, so I would also be in favor of Councilman Graham's amendment at this point in time as well.
It certainly wasn't around during that, that SIP program and that, that sort of stuff, but I feel like I've heard conflicting interpretations throughout this budget time as to whether or not those positions were promised to be put back, if they weren't, and, and such, and so I guess for clarity's sake, I don't know who has the institutional knowledge here, but like, what exactly was decided at that point in time? Because I feel like as we go down, there's, it, it's not just police and fire, there's probably other positions that whether they're on the pink sheets, whether they're on this spreadsheet, whether or not they're going to come up at some point in time that, that people retired from and that have been in this program. I want to make sure that if, if we set a precedent tonight that we're not here in three months, six months, twelve months, whenever the case may be, going through another budget, and that precedent gets thrown back at us by another department director who says, you know, same situation and this is how you handled it. I'm not saying that in opposition to any of the positions on this sheet and funding, it's just one of those finite amount of resource, limited amount of resources, and I know that every department desires to probably have some positions back. And I'm not saying that police and fire probably aren't one and two, two and one, whatever the case may be. However, what other positions were, you know, eliminated, whatever in that process, and what other promises or commitments were made or not made, and so I would, maybe somebody can fill in more so. I just feel like I've heard conflicting thoughts or interpretations of that process. I don't know if there's anything formal about that process, or if there's passed motions, or whatever the council's direction was.
Drew, I know you were around during a lot of that.
I defer to Gail, she was actually, actually involved in it.
When the program was put into place, the program stipulated that those positions must remain vacant until the end of fiscal year fourteen. There was nothing specifically said what would happen after that, other than that they had to remain vacant at that time. I think that the, certainly my interpretation, and maybe, you know, I can't necessarily speak for other people, was the, the thought was that those positions would be filled as money allowed.
I know as, as that was a very difficult time, Bill, you were there, Drew, you were there, Steve, you weren't here yet. But I mean, I went to all the departments, and I know everyone was, was down about losing people. And I remember specifically, police and fire, they felt that they were going to get those positions back when, when times got better. Mr. Bray. Oh, I didn't know if you had something.
I do.
Okay.
The, uh, Bill, could you remind me, please? With the, at the time the city administrator prepared his budget, with the information he had, it did not have the fire or the police position in it, did it?
That's correct.
And then the mayor, when the mayor presented his budget, and with the, working with, only with the information he had at that time, his budget that he presented to the council also did not have the police or the firefighter position in it.
Correct.
Correct. During the course of budget committee discussion, when discussing the police, when the police position was, was, was offered during a budget committee, we learned that the police have positions that they're looking to fill already. Seven, maybe? Is that?
I believe that's the number that the chief might have given at a meeting.
Yeah, he says so. So during the course of the year, the police has seven positions to fill before they get to another one. And, and, and this, the amendment that is offered, the amended budget, has the posi, has positions in it, and the, the funds to fund those positions, if our city, once our city administrator does the analysis and the study and the investigation, and, and can watch the revenues during the year, he can bring that position, we're asking him to bring that position to the council at any time. Also, during the budget committee process, we talked about the firefighter position, and then instead of firefighter, we got talking about the, the, the training officer position. And then do we need this one or that one, that was not in the city administrator's budget, it wasn't in the mayor's budget, it only came up with the budget committee. And then we didn't know if we wanted a firefighter, firefighter or a training officer. And we learned also that we haven't given the city administrator a chance to work with those positions, to see if he can work with the, with, if he has, can create a training officer within the, within the ranks already. In fact, we didn't, so we don't know if we need a training officer at this time. We really don't know if we need one. We haven't given the city administrator an opportunity to analyze the department, to do his study. And therefore, the, the idea with the amend, with the amendment, and it's, when I say the amendment, it's, it's not, it's not my amendment, it, I believe it represents several opinions on the council. What we've done, what I have done as, as budget chair and, and collecting the information, what's being shared with me, what we've done, the positions that were, are in the budget committee's budget, the salaries for those positions is rolled up into the same figure, so if the, the city administrator and the council, with those two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents, that's equivalent to the firefighter, the, the training officer position, the police position, the human rel, human resources position, and the street worker position. So it's not the intent to eliminate those positions. The intent is to give the city administrator time to study the situation over the next weeks and months and analyze the departments and the city's needs as a whole, and have the luxury of watching revenues coming in during the fiscal year to see if we can afford, see if we can comfortably afford any of these. And at that time, I assure you, if the city, when, if and when the city administrator decides to bring any of these positions to this council after he's done his work, I, I, I have full confidence in the council to sup, to support his recommendation to the council at that time. This, just by doing it this way, it just gives us a comfort level and flexibility, in my mind, to just kind of play it safe with the next fiscal year, so we have the advantage of watching the revenues, and we take, we have advantage of our city administrator and let him have a chance to see what he believes the needs are. That's all.
I have a quick question for Steve and Bill. The savings for, for the reorganization of the finance director, Steve, was something neither yourself nor I had when we were working on your budget or my budget?
That's correct.
Because obviously the council, the council was able to do that as part of the budget process.
That's correct.
We had a fire position, other things were trying to get done earlier this summer. I can't speak for Steve, but I would have easily funded those two positions that we're talking about out of a portion thereof, I don't know what your thoughts are. Mr. Graham.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we're talking about four positions, and please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong about the personnel. We're talking about an HR administrative assistant, we're talking about a street worker, we're talking about a police officer, and a fire, and a fire training officer, correct?
Those are correct, yeah.
And as I move around the city and as I talk to constituents, I know last week I had a meeting with some constituents in the fourth ward at one of their association meetings, and prior to that, had another meeting with another association in the fourth ward. And one of the things that we had talked about was the safety of our city, and wanted to, everyone wants to be safe and remain safe. And, and I think we deserve that as a city. Right now, and I have spoken to police officers and, and captains, and I think there is a concern, because at this point, they are getting overtime, but they are getting fatigued. And no one wants a fatigued officer or firefighter responding to an incident or situation in which they're tired, in which you have now put them and the, and the rest of the city in harm's danger. I'm not opposed to saying let's, let's leave the savings for the administrative assistant and the street worker to be up to our city administrator. But what I'm saying is, let's not allow for the time to come back to say, from the city administrator, do we need this extra officer, because I think we do, or do we need this training officer? Because right now, the captains are making, I think, each additional four percent additional on their, on their funds that they're making right now. So a fatigued officer and. So a fatigued officer and firefighter, uh, responding to a serious incident certainly does not put this city of Jefferson in the best light that, that we have. And I'm very concerned with that, and I would love to move forward with, uh, allowing a police officer and a training officer now, uh, before we allow the city administrator to make that decision. Thank you.
Ken? And I don't disagree, Councilman Graham. I think part of the conversation about some of the funding for these public safety positions is that there are a number of vacancies already that, that the police department is attempting to fill, and that I suspect that if, if the chief came to us and said, and, and some of that's dependent on the class and, and qualified candidates, that if he were to come to us and say, if there's five vacancies prior to this extra position, and he came and said, but I've got eight really qualified people, and I think we can be fully staffed, my guess is that the council would, would listen at that point in time. I mean, I understand the fatigue, and, and you certainly don't want a police force to function like that. It's, it's not because, in my opinion, that we're funding eighty-eight instead of eighty-nine. Um, and that, my guess is that, that a, a public works department official could say you don't want a fatigued, you know, street worker crew, and that, and that they're overburdened and, and they're handling large expensive equipment and doing things in the community. And so, I certainly don't disagree with that. I, I think what Councilman Bray is just proposing is, is for us to not tie our hands to anything quite yet. A lot of the extra revenue here that we're, that we're working with came from some reorganization, um, thanks to Mr. Betts' skill sets to, to, to function in those things. And quite frankly, you know, staff within IT and finance could say, that's money coming out of our budget. And we've got a list of things that we wanna tackle within finance and IT, why don't, why don't we get to keep the hundred and four thousand dollars to tackle some pink sheet things? I'm, I'm not saying that that would fly, but, but you can understand the logic for, for some departments to make tha- that reasoning there. I, I just think that a lot of, and I said this a couple of weeks ago at the budget committee, I feel like these revenues, the, these, the, this, these funds that we're playing with sort of came to us late in this budget process, after very thorough reviews elsewhere, um, to, to, to put together the budgets. And it's almost like, well, let's just spend it because we have it, as opposed to just taking a little bit of time, a little bit of time, you know, a month, two, three months, a- and prioritize some things. And it may be that, that, that the priority list is, is what you've described tonight. Or it could be that, that something else bumps up in front, or another matter a- arises. Um, I, I just think that we're, that we're okay passing Councilman Bray's recommendation to, to, to be, to, to take some time here, to allow some other things to work their way out. And we can move forward with staffing some of these positions a- after we have Mr. Kroll take a look at a couple of things, and, and, and work through that stuff. I, I'm curious, i- i- in the fire department, for example, if, is there a different solution? Is there something else going on there that, that can make this work? Same within HR, same within streets, same within other departments that are looking for staff. Um, that maybe there's some other solutions out there? And so, I, I think for the, the sake of tonight, I would feel much more comfortable with Councilman Bray's proposal, knowing that we can hold Mr. Kroll's feet to the fire a little bit, and let him do his job, and come back with some recommendations for us that everybody around this, th- this chamber feels more comfortable with moving forward. Um, and Mr. Betts' long-term projections do give, give me pause to see how these positions play out over time. Um, I don't think anybody here wants to put the public in danger, or not fully support our public safety, a- a- and our employees to do a good job. Um, and I don't think that this vote should be cast in that light. To me, this is a vote that's cast in the light of, you know, putting forth a fiscally sound budget, and authorizing our, our paid city administrator with thirty-plus years of experience to help us arrive at a solution for funding some positions with some revenues that came to light in the last two months.
Mr. Henry?
Uh, and this question is for Drew. Drew, do we need to vote on, uh, Councilman Graham's amend, since his amendment is out there, do we need to vote on it at, at this time?
Uh, when the discussion is complete, or someone calls a question?
I'll call for the question.
Question's been called and seconded. All those in favor of calling for the question and ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that's unanimous, or I should say nay. No nays? That's unanimous. So now we will vote on Carlos. Tell us what we're voting on.
Yeah, you're voting on the amendment to, to?
To substitute.
Well, Mr. Graham's amendment to, to the substitute, right. Which, which enti- entails leaving in the police officer and fire training officer training.
Roll call, please.
Branch?
No.
Bray?
Nay.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Nay.
Mahalovich?
Nay.
Prather?
Nay.
Scrivner?
Nay.
Ward?
Aye.
Six-four?
Six, no, four, yes.
Six-four, uh, that motion would be defeated. Uh, so Drew, we are now where?
Yep, so now we're back to Councilman Bray's motion, which is to, uh, essentially adopt the, uh, councils, uh, the, the budget committees, I'm sorry, I think that's right. It's the mayor's budget amended thusly. Yes?
It's, it's the one that says amendment.
The one that says amendment on it.
Yes.
Right, yeah, the amendment. Right, y- good, good point. Yeah, we wanna make sure this is just to adopt.
And by the way, we did have third reading at the beginning of this.
We did. And, uh, Gail makes an excellent point. We're moving just to adopt Mr. Bray's motion. At that point, it'll be on the floor, and then it'll be, then that'll be what's ready to be voted on. So voting in favor of Mr. Bray's amendment will not be the final vote we take tonight.
Okay.
That'll just put this amendment on the floor in front of you.
Okay, discussion on the amendment.
All right.
Bob?
Uh, I was gonna say this during the debate on the, on the previous, uh, amendment, but since it, it didn't pass, it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, still gonna bring it up. One of the, one of my concerns, and one of my reasons for supporting Councilman Bray's amendment, is that after we, uh, passed the councilman's, or the, the council committees' version of the, the budget committee's version, I asked, uh, Mr. Betts if he would plug in the numbers, uh, and create, uh, a projection for us for five years with the, um, by funding those positions. And, and all of you got this email, but if you'll notice, uh, five years out, with the four positions funded and no changes in revenue, I think maybe a one percent, uh, increase in revenue each year, isn't it what you projected?
For revenue, two-point-three percent.
Two-point-three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so with a two-point-three percent increase in revenue each year, we were gonna end up with a three-point-six percent fund balance by two thousand nineteen. So I think it's important that, and, and I'm not proposing that we not put the money in the budget, just as, as Councilman Bray's amendment will do. But I think it's very important that the administrator, uh, go through a process of, of evaluation, taking into account the long-term effects, taking into account the need, what kind of consolidations that they might be able to do, what kind of accommodations might be able to be met. Uh, you know, I don't want anyone, Councilman Graham, as you indicated, working tired, or working, uh, with bad morale, or, or anything else. I want everyone to be able to do their job and do it well. But we do have a reality of, of, uh, funding here. And so, uh, for us to want to, you know, substitute our, uh, individual judgment for, uh, the judgment of the paid administrator that we have, have, uh, hired to do this, uh, and, and not give him the time to at least make those, uh, evaluations and come back to us with a, a written recommendation. He may very well, uh, within thirty days, come back and say, we need all four of them just exactly as they are, and, and, uh, and that's what, this is my recommendation. And I don't, I for one, don't think that, uh, waiting thirty days to find out what his recommendation is, is gonna be a, a bad thing at all. Uh, I don't know why that, uh, that you would think that it is. I just, I really don't.
All right, any other discussion on the amendment, uh, known as Mr. Bray's amendment? Carlos?
Uh, I guess, uh, Councilman Scrivner, I don't think that it is, it's just that my concern is, I know how long it takes for, uh, a, a police officer to, to be hired, since I served on that committee for several, several years. And if they can get eight people out of this pool right now, with, with the eighth position, then they're gonna have to come back to the city administrator, who has to go before the committee, who has to go before the council, to get it approved. And that's my biggest concern. At that point, you have lost that person. That person is no longer there, 'cause we're thirty days, maybe forty-five days into it. So that's, that's my biggest concern.
I have a question, um, if everyone's to answer this. Uh, when it says that the administrator would have to come back for authorization, um, how long does that take? Uh, I mean, does it? I'm, uh, Steve, I mean, obviously this would be coming towards you, so I'll ask you the question. So hopefully the, the whole council and myself understands. If, if tomorrow morning you wake up after this is passed, and something horrible happens, and for whatever reason we have to hire, uh, some of these positions, very quickly, okay? How long will it take for you to respond to where you can do that? How long will it take for you to get, uh, your approval, which is what this is calling for, from these council members?
I, there, there's a couple of moving parts to that. Um, how long? I can make a decision pretty quick, if something happened in that case. Um, the discussion that I hear, though, is probably something that takes more than a month to do. If I'm gonna look at, um, some of the different, uh, plans that we have, like the multi-year plan, and, um, now that we've got the fiscal, uh, policies in place, and even the capital replacement plan, I think that that, that's gonna take some time, frankly, to do. Um, and I, from my point of view, I would wanna have that information, um, we've got those plans out to you, and we've looked at them, but I'd like to talk to you about them some more, and maybe refine those. Um, so I think it's, it's gonna take several months, and then I know there was some concern about the, um, revenues coming in. But that's just for those positions. Um, filling the, the vacant positions now for police officers, um, can happen relatively quickly, once the police have done their, um, job in getting, you know, the recommendations forward. Um, the fire one is, you didn't have the firefighter in there, you had the training officer in there. So I can get those to you pretty quick when that, if that, if it gets to that point. But the discussion that I'm hearing is to get some other things accomplished before, or at least that I would need in order to be able to make that decision. So, we're not sure how to answer that question. I can get it to you pretty quick, but if you want me to do the things that I heard you talking about tonight, that's gonna take some time, frankly. And, and some of that depends on you all. I think those are some conversations we need to have as a group, and work our way through some of those plans.
Actually, your neighbor there was first.
Well, I agree with most of what, uh, Councilman Bray put forth earlier. We had, had had a discussion prior to this evening, and I, and my biggest reservation is filling the fire training officer position, especially with the just last week, the Ebola scare. How many more meetings are people gonna have to go to, that if we're bouncing different training officers in there, they're gonna miss something? It doesn't get passed on. These guys are working overtime, they're coming in on days off, same as a lot of the police officers. And when they respond to an emergency, that police officer questioning me on the side of the road, I take a half step forward, he doesn't react, okay, I'm gonna go for it. And within the last couple of years, I think twice you guys gave citations to civilians in here that aided police officers that were fighting people on the side of the road. And if that police officer was tired, maybe it wouldn't have got that far, maybe the assailant would've got the officer's gun. Different story. But I think we need to push forward with the, uh, public safety folks. If we go external for a training officer, you're probably talking three to four months minimum, to even get one onboard anyway.
Bob?
You know, I think it's important that everyone know that, that this idea wasn't done in a vacuum. I mean, there were two or three of us that actually had conversation with the administrator. And I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I, and if I'm wrong, you, you correct me, uh, Mr. Kroll, but I think that, given the financial policies that we're putting in place, given the, the capital equipment, uh, requirements that are, that are woefully unfunded, and, and given the flat revenues and everything we have, all, all we're trying to do, or all I think this amendment's doing, and the reason I support it, is because we're taking, we're not putting him in a straitjacket. We're giving him a chance to, uh, do an evaluation, which I think he, he appreciates the opportunity to have that chance. Uh, unless I grossly misunderstood and misread, uh, uh, our conversation, he appreciates the, the opportunity to, to have, uh, the flexibility to do an evaluation, and put in place some, some, uh, uh, recommendations to address some of these problems. We, we can't just look at personnel in a vacuum and not consider the other needs of the city. I mean, that's the popular thing to do, that's the easy thing to do, when you have the police department, the fire department, and the public works department, and, and, uh, human resources department coming to you and telling you how badly they need this position, or need that position, it just, as Mr. Mahalovich said, it becomes a beauty contest. We sit here and we decide which one of these department heads made the best presentation to us, or which one we personally feel ought to be funded. Is that the way to run the city? I don't think so. That's why I'm supporting the, this amendment, is because I think the best way to do it is to give the professional that we've hired to administer the city, the opportunity to have the flexibility to evaluate these positions, evaluate the need, and see how much money that we have, and, and apply that to it. That, that's all I'm saying, is let's give him the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Henry?
I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question on this.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been, uh, questions been called and seconded. All those in favor of calling for the question and ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That's unanimous. Now we'll be voting on, Drew, make sure it's right, please.
To substitute the, uh, count, the committee's budget for Councilman Bray's amended budget. Again, you'll have one more vote. If this passes, you'll at least have one more vote, which is to actually approve the budget. This will just substitute Councilman Bray's for the one that's on the floor.
Okay.
So, am I correct in understanding, an aye vote is in favor of the amendment?
Correct. If you vote yes, you're in favor, you're in favor of Councilman Bray's amendment. If you vote no, you would be in favor of the committee's.
That one, and then we start to vote on this one.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
What, Ken?
I just wanna make sure that, when you said a vote in, you are in favor, in reality, what you're saying, a vote in favor means you're voting in favor of putting that one on the floor. I think that's what Mr. Costalis was asking. If he votes yes, what he means is he's voting yes to substitute, not that he necessarily agrees with it.
Okay, you, you're correct, you've got one more vote.
That's the one we'd be voting on.
Right. I'm sorry, yep, if I wasn't clear, yep.
One more time, Drew. For the, for the bleachers.
A vote yes will put, uh, Councilman Bray's, uh, budget amendment, a budget on the floor, which will then be needed voted on again. A vote no would reject Councilman Bray's amendment, and would leave on the floor the council committee's budget. Neither of which finally, for discussion, for discussion.
Roll call, please.
Right.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
No.
Graham?
Nay.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Drew, now we'll be voting on.
Now you've got Councilman Bray's motion is on the floor.
Okay. Okay.
Councilman, let me re-say that. Councilman Bray's budget is now, what is it, before the council?
Gotcha. Discussion. Rick?
I just want to say that I'm quoting from you, Mayor. The positions were to return to these, as you correctly indicated, when funding improved. I think that's the thing we're missing right now, and I'm, I'm going to be the first to be supporting public safety, once I'm convinced that funding has improved to the degree at which we can fund any positions. We've left a lot of money on the table with pink sheets. I'm not a very good judge of which of these have the highest priority, but we have made a statement tonight. We have funded some salary increase, we have funded some positions, we have funded some real important things for the city, but we're going to fund this pending what I think is maybe a rosy picture, and then we're all good. But if not, at least we've been responsible for the, for what we think is, as a conservative budget to be passed.
Ken, did you have something? Bob?
I was just going to say, I, I don't think I've ever voted to add $232,000 for, to fund four additional positions, and felt like that I had done so much wrong. I mean, I've been betrayed here, like somehow we're in opposition to these positions, and we just voted to put the money in, or we're getting ready to vote to put the money in the budget to fund them. And yet, the, the way the debate's gone, it makes it look like somehow we're, those of us that, that support this amendment are somehow against public safety, or, or against employees. Couldn't be further from the truth. We're just trying to be responsible in the way that, that we're going about it.
Bob, I have a question. But those, those positions will no longer be a part of this budget. They're out of the budget. I understand they can come back, I understand any new position can come back, but for tonight, and in the morning, when everyone wakes up, those positions are out of this budget.
The money for those positions are, is set aside in this budget. If there is never a recommendation from the administrator to fill those positions, then that money that was set aside will go back to the fund balance. If the administrator comes to us and says, "We want to fund the police position," or "We want to fund the training, fire safety, or fire training officer position," then those positions will, in all likelihood, be funded. I, I can't say that the council will vote for it, but I'm assuming, given all the debate tonight, they will be funded. So are they itemized and, and line item in the budget? No. But the funds for them is there. All we're saying is, get authorization before you.
So my point, Bill, and I think Bob just answered this. In the past, we had showed number eighty-nine, for instance, and I'm not picking on that, it's just a number that I can remember. Number eighty-nine was in the budget but not funded, and that gave us vacancy savings. And tomorrow morning's printing of this, eighty-nine will not be there.
That's how I would interpret it as well, yes.
Anyone else?
One other quick comment. If, if we have, and I'm sure we do, a fatigue problem, and a under, under staffing problem with the police department, it will be helped immensely if the five currently unfilled position, five positions, are filled. And that one position that's not filled, may or may not affect it significantly, but for sure, the five that are authorized, funded, and unfilled are affecting it a lot every day.
Laura?
I would just like some clarification on that line item. There is also equipment and expenses added to that line item with positions. If we're saying that this money will go specifically to positions, I'm kind of weary of having a couple of other items listed on that line item. Could I have some direction there? Mr. Bray, is that who I need to direct it to?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I, there, I believe there are all ready. We don't know that all four of those positions will be filled. And we don't know how the, we don't know if, if they will be filled. And the funding, but the funding there, the figure, the two hundred and, the $232,000 figure represents the total of the four positions. However, since we don't know if, if, if all four will be filled or not, the intent is just simply to provide flexibility in case, because we've, we've also heard about during the budget process, all the equipment replacement that we need. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, we need to start spending towards equipment replacement. So it simply gives the city administrator the greatest flexibility possible to, to serve, to, to come up with the best scenario possible for the funds, if revenue, if, if the revenue keeps up with projections. So it's just, just for flexibility within the budget.
Steve?
I was just going to say, but in either case, it still needs to come back to council for authorization, whether it's personnel or equipment.
That's right.
And expenses was just related to personnel equipment. It's not, that's not a third item. It's a little misleading, but you're right, that's real.
Besides miscellaneous office expenses?
Steve, in yours, in your eyes, is there a, is there a fund balance percentage that the city has to be at in order for you to come back to us?
On, on, for this particular issue?
Yes.
No. No, I, I think, I'll, I'll just leave it at no.
Okay. Ken, did you have something?
I have a question for, for Chief Schrader, I guess, or Steve, or, or Gail, working through this process. I mean, just for clarity's sake, so, because I made the point earlier about, if you have five vacancies, and you feel like you have six candidates that can fill positions, you know, there's only five spots, I guess, to offer at that point in time. And so if, if the chief desires, then because he's got six, and there's a need for it in that process, what's it take to, to get that position filled? Or, does that make sense what I'm asking, in the sense of, if you feel like he's got six qualified candidates, there's five open spots, we've heard from the council that they're supportive of public safety, how quickly can that be moved on for him then to offer the, the sixth position? If that, I'm sorry if that doesn't make as much sense as it is in my head, but...
I think I understand the question. The complication is, I have to have approval before I can offer conditional employment. In other words, I can't extend an offer to, to someone for which there's not an authorized position. And I have to extend a conditional offer of employment before they can take the psychological assessment and the physical assessment. So if we're, let's say, about two-thirds of the way through the process, and that's when we are aware of the number of people remaining, if you will, and the number of positions authorized, then I would have to seek approval for, if we're talking about this position tonight, for that position, which would require talking to the city administrator, and then coming before the council, and all I could do was to persuade the persons that might be remaining, that if they just kind of hang in there for a few weeks, we can, we'll have an answer for them. But I have, I'll have to wait until those things happen.
Okay. And I'll, I just only bring up that point, I, in, in talking a lot about these positions, like, to me, of the four, that's the one that's in a continuous hiring process and, and filling vacancies, and I get that there's some churn and turnover there. The other positions themselves, it's, it's not as though there's a continuous applicant pool in going after things. And I, I know we're prioritizing things, and, and early on in this budget process, it kind of snowballed. We added one, we added a second, we added a third, we added a fourth. I guess I look at some of these and think that maybe there's other creative solutions at times to, to fill need within certain departments to be explored. You know, I've had it mentioned to me about, you know, the fire training, and there was requests for other, other staff within the fire department, including some administrative support, plus shift staff, plus the training officer. Within HR, there was a couple of options. But you know, police may be that one where it, it's harder to come up with a creative solution long-term to, to fill that position. And so I guess I just want us to be mindful of whatever decision we make tonight, to, to certainly not, you know, tie the hands. I think that a lot of us are saying tonight, that we think, we believe eighty-nine being the sworn officer number is, we're supportive of that, we're just not comfortable tonight committing to that. I want to make sure that we don't make a statement tonight that would prohibit maybe filling those vacancies, or, or such down the line, if the chief and, and the hiring team have, have the proper person in place. And so, there's a, there's a statement from me for now.
Mr. Mahalovich?
I'd like to call the previous question.
Question's called, in a second. All those in favor of calling for the question and ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That's unanimous. Now we will vote on.
You'll be voting to approve the budget, as amended by Mr. Bray. Finally, so this is your final vote.
All right. Does everyone know what they're voting on at this time?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to number fifteen. We have presentations from the gallery on other topics. I have a Ms. Barbara, is it Ross? Is that correct? If you would, ma'am, please give us your name and address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. When you get close to three minutes, I'll hold up kind of the high sign.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for letting me come before you this evening. Probably no less than twenty-five times over the last three-plus years, I have been in contact with the News Tribune to not throw their advertising trash on my property. I live at 103 Bel Air Drive, I've lived there this, I'm in my twenty-sixth year. Now, they've probably thrown it there a long time, and it, they probably throw it every month. But because I have complained bitterly to them about constantly throwing it there, some months I don't get it, other months, we're back to the same, same old thing. They did send someone to my house last week, who was very apologetic, and said he would make sure I was on the list to not have their advertising trash thrown on my property. Well, we'll see, we'll see how that goes, but here's my point. I called my councilperson, Mr. Scrivener over here, we had a nice conversation, and he went to look at the city ordinance related to this. And yes, they're allowed, because they're a business, and it's supposedly their free speech, although I doubt that they're concerned about free speech whatsoever. They are concerned about their advertising dollars, however. But it shouldn't be my responsibility, I shouldn't have to pick up their trash so they can make money. I want it off my property, and I don't want it, to return it. If you can be on a no-call list in this state, and they cannot access your phone to sell you junk, or advertise to you in any way, we should at least have some kind of a no-call list. When you say you don't want them throwing their advertisements in your yard, it means you, they can't do that. And if they persist in doing it, there should be some kind of a penalty that they pay. Now, I suppose you could, the other thing would be to amend the city ordinance in some way, that to just disallow it. I was having this conversation at a little dinner I was having at my house a couple of weekends ago, and I'm telling them I was going to come to the, before the city council to complain about this, and they said, "Oh, yes, we hate that thing being thrown in our yard." And I'm like, "I suspect that almost everybody in town hates it. They pick it up, it's trash, and they put it in the trash. They never even open it. Once you've opened it, you know it's nothing but a whole gob of advertisements. You don't bother to do it again, you just take it to the trash." We shouldn't have to do that, though. I have an, a neighbor who's not very well that lives next door to me, all winter, they accumulate in his yard. I look out there, and there's three, and then there's four, and then there's five, and then there's ten, and then there's however many, until spring comes around. It's just an unsightly, unnecessary mess that citizens shouldn't have to put up with. It's just, it's just uncalled for. And I'd like for the city council to know about it. I told the paper I was coming to the council, I was going to complain to it, I complained to the mayor about this. I don't want it thrown on my property, there should be some kind of a penalty. You should be able to be on a list that means something, and they should, once you're there, they cannot, they can no longer come and just summarily throw that onto your property without being penalized. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Ma'am, how often are these, this thrown into your yard?
I suspect they come every month, but I've been complaining about it for so long to the paper, that it comes sporadically. I got one last week, or the week before, it sat there for a couple of days. I called four times to the newspaper office, was pretty irate with them about, and told them they have to come and pick it up. I always tell them they have to come and get it out of my yard, or off of my, out of my driveway. And sooner or later, they send somebody to do that. But it probably comes every month, but because the list doesn't have any meaning, that you're on it, it's meaningless, they'll skip a month or two, and then it's right back in your, on your property again. It's trash. If you have to pick it up, and you consider it trash in your yard, it's trash.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Have you noticed any from any other vendors, I'll call them vendors, other than the newspaper?
It comes, there are paid advertisements that come into your mailbox all the time. If they want to pay, and it comes into my mailbox, I go to my mailbox, and I pick up the mail, okay, I'll, I'll deal with that. I don't want them to just be able to summarily throw it onto my property.
Would you mind if I had our city councillor respond to that? And Drew, you might share with her our conversation, or certainly what your interpretation of the situation is?
Yeah, I'm glad to. We did explore a little bit of this, I don't know, a couple of years ago now, it has to do with the leaflet advertisements. And there's a whole, I think what Bob was kind of referring to, there's a whole series of law about what you can do to limit free speech and advertisement, get less protection of commercial advertisement stuff. And so we did do a little bit to keep, to try to walk the fine line, and say that you can't do leaflets in newspapers and such unless they're secured in such a way they won't blow around. So it's a littering issue, you kind of try to focus it on, on the littering issue. It's a tough thing to craft, to prevent them from sending it to your, to delivering advertisements to a person's property. It's something we can explore a little bit further, but I'll tell you, it's, it's very difficult, because again, you're talking about, we have no power to limit commercial, because of interstate commerce stuff.
I'm sure we genuflect at the altar of big business, there's no doubt in my mind about that. But it is littering. I'll bet you that eighty-five or ninety percent of the people in this town consider it litter, and put it in their trash almost immediately. And if you can be on a no-call list, and they can't access your phone without penalty, we should have a no-littering ordinance about whether you're commercial or otherwise, that means something.
Mm-hmm.
Said my piece. Go to it.
Ms. Ross, with that, your time's up. Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, Mrs. Ross would be my mother, but...
Well, sorry.
Well, she is deceased.
Hey, I've learned at this seat, I can't make everyone happy.
Well, I suspect that other people just would not complain, but after over three years and twenty-five or more calls, it's time to complain.
Thank, thank you for your concerns, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more person here, Mr. Massey. Dan? Dan? You're up, sir. I, I have you on the list here to speak. Or, Arthur, just hand him the mic, if you would, please.
Let me get my leg scrubbed. Oh, sorry.
Do you want to sit down and just do it for me?
Mr. Massey, welcome back. For the record, would you please state your name and your address, please, and limit your remarks to three minutes?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand you.
Your name and address, please.
Dan T. Massey.
Dan T. Massey, lifelong resident of Jefferson City with Capitol, I live at the, at, the apartment complexes out on Broadway Street, at the Garn Place. But I've been mistreated so bad by the different hospitals and the different goings, it's just been unbelievable, where I've been mistreated, and they have done so bad with me, and I don't, I don't know what to do anymore. I've, I, they've refused treatment with me, and I've just gotten so bad that I can't hardly function anymore.
Mr. Massey, I would like to sit down with you and Drew and our city administrator when there's a time that, that you could, sometime in the next couple of days. There's a lot of different services within our community that can help different people like yourself, and I'm sure Steve could help us hopefully steer you in those, in that direction, if that might help.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Steve, would you get with him after this meeting and get that set up, please, if you would? Mr. Massey, I know you've been through a lot with health reasons and whatnot. You've told us that before. I really do appreciate you taking the time to stand up and to come here tonight. Obviously, I know it's difficult for you to get out, and we appreciate it, and we'll do everything we can as a community to help you. All right?
Mayor, well, my, my goal is trying to protect somebody else from going through what I have. I've, thank God, so lucky, but it's just been so irresponsible with the different things that have gone on with all these, when I was put to death three times at the local nursing home during, they put me out, and I've just been through it all, and it's just been unbelievable. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll try to get you the help that you need, sir. Thanks for being here. Next on our agenda, I have council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Seeing none. Any new business? Any old business? At this point, any unfinished business? At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve our closed session minutes from October the 6th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
We accept a roll call, that one. That was a closed session.
Dang it. I wouldn't have thought a Dodger fan would even be paying attention tonight. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
I won't point out to our councilors.
Mr. Mayor, as a Dodger fan, his mind's not on the World Series right now. Completely focused.
Motion passes. Next, at this point in time, we could go into closed session and talk about contract negotiations under the revised statutes of Missouri, section 610. Dot 021. Dot 12. Is there a motion to do so?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
At this point in time, we will meet back here in approximately 10 minutes. Let everyone use the facilities. I would ask that the people that are supposed to remain, remain. They know who they are. Thank you very much. Drive home safely.